...
Yeah.
I just called the march to order for Monday, April 8th. I have an amendment to the agenda to start with, please. Number, item number thirteen. Please eliminate us from the agenda for tonight. We will not be going to closed meeting. Looking for approval of the amended agenda. Move second. All's in favor? Opposed, carry. Adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting held March 25th. Be adopted as presented. Move second. Any errors or omissions? All's in favor? Opposed, carry. But the record of the public hearing held March 25th, 2019, received. Received and received. Q. All's in favor? Opposed, carry. We have one delegation tonight. That's one I always like to hear from. That's our RCMP partners in the community. We have our staff, sergeant detachment staff, Sergeant Carl Redner here tonight. We also have Superintendent Brian Massey. So the floor is yours, gentlemen, whoever's speaking.
Well, thanks, Mayor. Thanks to Mayor and Council for the invitation yet again, and to all the guests. I'm used to a little bit more people in the audience tonight, so I was told that it's a budget night. I may have had an influence on the amount of people, but thank you for those that came out for this. As you had mentioned, Aaron, thank you very much. Superintendent Brian Massey is here. He is in charge of the Upper Fraser Valley Regional Detachment. The area that encompasses Agassy, Chilliwack, Hope and Boston Bar. So a pretty wide area. And what I'll be speaking about tonight, and I don't mean to turn my back on anybody, I'll keep moving around, is our strategic plan. It's a wrap-up of what we went to the community about and to the elected representatives for the communities. We had direct meetings with individuals. We also had an online survey. And through that, part of that process, we got together after the fact to collate the data that was collected from the general public to put together the strategic plan for the Upper Fraser Valley Regional Detachment, for the entire area. There are going to be unique things, and I may have mentioned that during our meeting that we had here, that is going to be strictly, or going to be for Hope specific. That never changes. Obviously, we're always amenable. Things are always, can be changed or amended to fit our local priorities, but this is the, our guiding principles for the next three years. We did this exercise back in 2015. Some of you may have been around for the origination of that one. That was prior to my time, but I, when I came on, it became part of my operating agenda for, within the Upper Fraser Valley Regional Detachment. So I'm sure most of you know, I've been here for three and a half years now. I stopped hearing the question as to whether I was going to leave or not, so I thank you for stopping that. I am here, I'm not going anywhere, and as far as I know, the superintendent hasn't asked me to leave as of yet, and neither has Mayor or Council. So thank you for that vote of confidence at this point in time. So our strategic plan came to an end in 2018. So we needed to go over the process again of developing the strategic plan. So it, as it indicates there, it's going to guide our detachment operations until 2021. We want obviously to have measurable outcomes, so that the public, elected representatives, could have something concrete to look at to see, are we moving forward? Are we developing? Are we doing what it is that we need to do? And that's what, and what was being asked of us, or what's being asked of us to do. We obviously use crime data. We're an intelligence-developed organization at this point in time. We look at the demographic, we looked at the whole scope of things within the UFPRD, and then of course, foiling within that. Again, we did consultation. We did consultation with specific groups, specific people, specific agencies. And we also sought out people to respond to an online survey. So those even that were part of a community consultation, where we were direct and sat down across in a room with them, we also invited people to go and do an online survey. So from that, we've developed a plethora of information, and from that, we were able to determine very distinct ideas and issues that the public had identified. And it was common throughout all the areas within the UFPRD. It wasn't unique to Chilliwack, and I know that Chilliwack is the big brother within the UFPRD, but when we were able to, we, now, of course, we could split out the data in between all the different CPOs, the community police offices, and the different areas, we identified that the thought processes and the wants and desires of the community were similar. There was very little difference. It's just numbers that became, of people that responded on the online survey is only an indicator of difference. So what are we dealing with for the, for the next three years? And obviously, it'll go beyond that, but we stay focused during three years. We're seeing a growth in population. Hope has stayed relatively on a, on a plane. There is some growth, but it's not to the same level as Chilliwack. However, things are changing. There is always the potential for change, so that is part of one of the things that we are dealing with. Organized crime always is one of the topics once that comes up. Homelessness, and I know that has been a touchstone here in Hope, as it is anywhere else in B.C. or across Canada, probably beyond anywhere our, our borders. So you can see, again, when we cover, or in traffic concerns, sorry, there's always traffic. It wasn't, oddly enough, it wasn't a highly represented area of concern within the populace, but it was enough for us to look at and say, no, we still need to maintain that as a priority for our policing to ensure the safety of the driving public. Anytime you have a death on the road, and they find that you have issues that happen on the road, we do take a lot of complaints in regards to traffic, traffic issues that occur within the Hope District of Hope area. So we cover, as I said, a white swath area, and you can read the list as much as I can, and don't need to go through it. What is the key for us, and what really gets firmly developed is our partnerships that we need to develop. The partnerships that exist within this room, and then does also outside of this with the provincial government, federal government, because we are obviously a federal agency. The health authorities, that becomes very, very much prevalent when you start dealing with the homelessness and vagrancy issues. You'll see that come up as in a topic point later on in the slide presentation. The education system, and of course, the courts. Everybody has their own feelings about the courts. I keep mine to myself, and if you want to read the whole bulletin board by own means, I choose not to read that. I apologize. Nobody will. So, here's the, we had seven questions that we developed for this. Pretty same, and the same seven questions that went across the board. There was an online portion that allowed obviously for free verse and people to put in their own. There was fill-in, or just a tick box in some cases, where you could just hit a particular topic, but there was a free verse portion where people could put in their own ideas and their own thoughts. It wasn't limited to just, hey, here are the things that we selected on your behalf to identify what's important. Of course, we go with the biggest, the biggest topic items that generally we see in the public, or what the general public is looking at, but it allowed for a variety of different answers from the public, whatever they felt that was necessary, or what was important to them. Because it wasn't individual exercise at that time. Yes, we made it a group exercise in the end, when we spit out the data, but it was an individual exercise. So what was the number one issue? And again, this was across the board. This wasn't specific to any community. It was visibility. People want to see us. Completely understandable. So we need to look at that. That comes up as an answer. People said that we have good service. So it, kind of a pat on the back for us. We'll accept that. That's a very, that's very gracious. But what could we do better? Once again, it got to visibility. We want to see our police officers out there interacting with the community, not just in a car driving around, not just responding in calls for service, but being part of the community in different facets, above and beyond just call response. So what could we do to make a positive difference? Patching in with visibility is be accessible. So they want us to be a part of the community, where they can interact with us. And it's not just an interaction based on a phone call or a complaint that comes in for, it's very specific, it is beyond that. So that's what we've, we've read into, or what we've seen, I shouldn't say read into, what we've seen and what came from the community. And engage with the community, again, part of the accessibility, but part of the process is not just merely, again, call response, but being part of the community, above and beyond, doing policing functions. I think people, not think, people know what it is that we do. That's not the core issue. What they want to see is that we interact, that we are part of the community, not merely just people driving around in a car dealing with the issue of the day or the issue of the moment. The issues are going to be there, and that, again, that'll come up. So what can we work on together? Again, it gets the community. Community is the theme that we picked up on the responses that we've received, especially at events. Now, I, that comes not just from Remembrance Day, I know that you see the community, Remembrance Day is always a big one for us and a touchstone to our hearts, but Canada Day, you know, the Brigade Days, anything that, within the community, where there's, there's something that's going on, and they seek, they would like to see us there, to engage, above and beyond policing, because people have a lot of interest, a lot of discussions, and we've had them. But could we do better? Absolutely, and the public has identified that. One of the ones, and this is, and I apologize for, I may not be the oldest in the room, but I'm old, social media is a changing dynamic in the RCMP. It is a changing dynamic for policing all told. We need to do better. That is not something that we're good at. There are internal issues that we need to overcome, barriers that we need to overcome to be better at it, because people want things quicker. They're getting used to things coming quicker. So we need to catch up and raise our bar to meet that level. Now, there are things, again, internally that we have to deal with and overcome. Is it something that we can do? Absolutely. But again, it was identified by the public. Everybody craves information, so, and they want the information quick. They might want it in 15-second snippets, but neither here nor there, they just, they crave information. So we need to do better and communicate that through these methods. And that's not the whole bulletin board. I want to clear that up immediately. So again, connect and communicate with the community. When people are looking, okay, what does the public want us to keep in mind with our strategic planning? So you can see out of those answers, community, visibility, and accessibility were the common traits that they were looking for out of the police service that was here. This is very specific to Hope and Boston Bar. Now, there wasn't a lot of people who responded on Boston Bar, but the answers, again, were all the same. So these are overwhelming with what came up as the primary topic points to the, or the answers to the questions that were provided. So I think, you know, I don't need to be hit over the head with a frozen snowshoe to understand that we need to do better in the public eye and be able to. So that's one of, one of our guiding principles. So, public safety priorities. First, now we got to get to the actual policing aspect of what it is that we do. It isn't our name, police, so property crime. Property crime is, and has traditionally always been a high-ranking issue within the minds of the public. Understandably, because it generally involves personal property, homes, businesses. And people are, you know, that, that really strikes close to home, and it is a very, is one of those instances that if you've ever been involved in that, you understand internally how you feel when somebody invades your private space. So that, you, we understand why it is that it is such a high, that came out as the number one issue for the public. And again, clear across the board. Again, police presence and visibility. Again, when we touch on that topic is, and I keep going back to it, but that's what the public has identified. Response time. I think we do very good. Can we do better? Absolutely. When you look at the numbers that are there, can we do better? Absolutely. Drugs, drugs that are in issue, let's not get into the whole cannabis thing. That's a new area for us as much as it is for the public. I don't think we've seen the end of what it is in regards to legalization of cannabis. There are offshoots from that that are going to cause issues, but to be said, that's a changing environment to what I started 28 years ago, to what it is today. But there is more than just cannabis, there's a number of other drug issues. And then homeless and vagrancy. I know that this has been a topic point since I've been here for three and a half years. It's not going to go away, it is part of the public. What we are looking at from a Hope perspective, if I can dare speak just for Hope, we are in the launching stage of a situation table that hopefully, no pun intended, will see positive results when dealing with the homelessness and vagrancy issue. We identify the people that need the help, and then get them the help that is required from the particular agency that is in the best position to provide that assistance. That may be police, that usually obviously involves court and jail. It may be mental health. It may be a number of different agencies, but it's agencies getting together, identifying the individuals, and then providing, developing, or developing a strategy that will put them in the best case, best chance of success, so that we start mitigating or, we'll never eliminate it, but at least can't be down, some of the homelessness and vagrancy issues. I know there's a number of things that are going on within the community that will be going on in days or months to come, and that's something that we'll have to adapt to as well, because the community has its own plan as to what it is that it's going to do, and we have to work in with the community as part of the community department. So big fancy slide, lots of words, I can bore you to details. We, we came up with three, three primary topic points. We have, as you know, we have the, we're federal. The RCMP as a federal agency has its own strategic priorities. Then it goes down to the provincial level, so E-division, which is British Columbia, has their identified priorities. We have to keep that in mind when we are forming our strategic priorities, we fall under that. That's not escapable for us. However, when we looked at, again, the answers provided by the general public, it's amazing how they fell in line with what it is that we see through a division as a whole we're looking at. We structured it to more localized, as it should be, and then it came to three topic points, and those in the dark blue bulbs. So enhance community safety, very broad-based topic. Of course, it's broken down into three different subgroups. Focus on partnerships and community engagement. Again, a very important aspect of policing. We can't do this alone. Mental health can't do it alone. No, no agency can do it alone, we have to work together. And we need to do better at working together, or enhance the relationships that we've already developed, and make them better. And then promoting organizational excellence and supporting our people. Any, any organization looks the same way. You got to make sure that your people are treated well, that they're given the proper tools to do the job to the best of their ability. So in our case, if we give them the tools, that is going to translate into a more professional and a better product that's going to be on the road providing community safety. So we have to look internally as well, with the long-term goal, of course, of identifying that this is going to be a benefit to the, our external partners, or the community. So we break it down to priority one, enhance community safety. So prevent and reduce crime. That's, of course, one of our objectives. If we didn't go into this thinking that wasn't an objective, then we've missed them entirely. Of course, we want to see our call volume go down, our property crime rates, all those things we'd like to see on a negative trajectory. That's, that's what it is that we do, and we need to plan on how to do that, overall, taking in all our partnerships and everything that is that we have available and what it is that we can use to make that happen. Number two, no shock, visibility. It was, as you could tell, sorry, I just went back, sorry. As you saw from the questions that the general public answered, the overwhelming response had to do with visibility and accessibility. So if we didn't include visibility in our operating mandate, it would have been a miss, because this is what the community wanted. So we need to increase our visibility, not the car going down the street. This is the, sitting in a, going into businesses, sitting in a coffee shop and talking to the general public. You like coffee? Well, you like coffee, I'll be honest, so. But having those conversations, because we can't do beer, I, I'll be honest.
You can, but...
Yes. And then enhancing resource efficiency. In this day and age, and I, you know, you're having a meeting that's going to deal with budgets, well, if we're not doing the best of our ability to ensure that you're getting the best product from us, the most efficient way possible, so that the citizens of Hope are not being asked to pay more, we have to look internally to see how it is that we can do better. What is the, where is it that we can save? We're all looking for efficiencies, there isn't an agency that isn't, so we, again, we would be somewhat remiss if we didn't look at our own internal structure and figure out, okay, how is it that we can do things more efficiently? Which sometimes translates into cost savings or expanded service. So we have outcomes. We want to reduce property crime. Five percent doesn't seem like a large number when, when you see the property crime rates. We want to see, we want to get to a manageable number that, and it's achievable, because we have to look at the community and our people as well, in overall. But we want to reduce property crime by five percent. We want to get to places quicker, the response time. If someone calls for service, barring a 911 where somebody is in trouble, those are our priorities. If somebody, if it's a personal issue where an actual person is at risk, that becomes our priority. Obviously, a business or something takes a backseat. It's not, it's unfortunate that may have to happen, but I think people would understand that we need to take care of people first, and then worry about property second. We'd like to reduce the calls for service in our hotspots. I don't think anybody in this room would be shocked if we, if I said Memorial Park. So, and the downtown court. That's, we've seen a, obviously, a drop. I've seen a substantial drop over the winter months. Obviously, our new, our new extreme weather and shelter that's over on, well, among neighbors, they have increased the call for service in the area, but that was an expected change because, or an expected uptick, because it was a change to the local area. So it was something new that was introduced. Of course, we've seen a vast drop in calls for service out of the Thunderbird, so you kind of, you take the, you know what's coming, and then you plan for it. But we need to look at our hotspot areas and see how we can do a better, more efficient job in those areas. And then motor vehicle. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's all going to be charges. Charges are just, we're, we're not out there to focus on doing tickets. Ticket revenue goes to the province. It's not, that's not what we're about, and that's not what I'm about in dealing with the members in the Hope CPO. If somebody is, and we do have repeat offenders because we track this, and if somebody doesn't want to play within the rules and continually flaunts the rules, school zone enforcement is, is a touchstone for me. If we're not protecting the kids, and I think that would be an expectation to the public. So we look at motor vehicle. That, again, makes our roads safe. It's a, it's a safety issue. Right, partnerships and community engagement. Okay, we need to work with our partners for community safety. I mentioned the situation table. That is one of those ideas that formulated in regards to working with our partners on developing strategies that are going to mitigate some of the issues that are within, or the safety issues that are within the community. We can't do it alone. I, I've been, I don't want to say I've been pounding that desk, but, you know, I, I've said since I've been here that we have obviously responsibility, and we're involved in the homelessness issue, but it's not a policing issue. I get called for service, no, it's not me, but the members in the office get called for service to do with homeless and vagrancy issues. That has obviously, I, I can deal with the surface end of it, but the underlying issues, and then everybody in the room understands that. So that's why we have to work with our partners, because we can't solve this one on our own. I'm not that smart. Our indigenous policing partnerships. We have, we have a number of police, or First Nations reserves in the area. We need to enhance our relationship with them to ensure that things are going, that they have a sense that we care, that we're involved in the issues within their culture, within their areas that are important to them. And then communication and education activities. Some relate that DARE. I'll use DARE as an example for Hope. I have now trained, and I'll be, somebody that's much better at it than I, to be a DARE officer, and is now in the local schools. So it is that sort of education opportunity that we take advantage of, so that we see that as a positive, that's going to pay out, maybe not today, we won't see that effect for today, but we'll see it tomorrow. We'll see it five years from now. And by getting in on it at this stage in time, and if any of you have ever been part of the DARE program, sure didn't exist when I was a kid, so I don't even know what it was like when I was a kid, but it's that sort of education opportunity that we take advantage of, that we can see a benefit to the community at large, not only today, but obviously paying it forward. It's important. Again, the, the goal blocks is what we're looking, our engagement outcomes, what it is that we want to do. We want, of course, the fourth bullet sounds a little ominous when you say increase reporting of violence in relationships by three percent a year. I mean, we want more calls for service? Seems kind of odd, but the reason that's there is that we're not getting those calls for service. There are people out there in relationships that are not contacting the police and are living a personal hell on a, excuse the language, on a day-in, day-out basis. And when they're not contacting us, there's very little that we're able to do, engage with them, to provide them that safety, and protect, and get them to a location or into a, a safe, a safe life beyond where it is now. So that's why we have an increase, because we're seeing, what we've seen is generally, somebody goes through eight, is it eight to 15, somewhere in there, eight to 15 calls for service, or incidents that happen in their lives before a police server notified. So that's why we're seeing an increase. It seems at odds, but that's why we want to see the increase, because by the time you get to that eighth or 15th call, things have really gone terribly. So counterintuitive to say we want an increase, but that's the reason for the increase. Again, we want to, when you deal with mental health apprehensions, again, that deals with working with partnerships. For us, it's really important here in Hope that we have a reduction to the best as we can. Obviously, we're not in control of the whole thing, but the closest mental health facility that we have is Chilliwack. So if an officer from here has to go to Chilliwack, which inevitably, invariably they have to do, dependent on the patient to deal with, well, that has repercussion effects to the community. So to see a drop in that means that there's not an officer that now has to go to the hospital, wait for a doctor to see the patient, and then be able to come back. And when you're dealing with a 40-minute trip on either end, it's 90 minutes just for driving, and the average wait time in the hospital is, I don't even want to tell you that, because if you've been in a hospital, you already know, we actually get in quicker than what most public is, but we're still looking at an expanded wait time for us. So the repercussion, again, for the local community is such that an officer that's paid to do policing work here, but because of a call for service has to, and because of the needs with, of the medical community, we have had to go outside the area, that has obviously tripled on effect. So we would like to see that number reduced. Thank you. Then dealing with our own people, of course, remember wellness. You've got a happy, engaged individual. Again, it's the same as any company. We, we didn't write the book on this, you know, this is something we, we can steal and plagiarize from any other corporations. Happy, engaged people show up for work and do the best job that they possibly can. We got to give them the right tools on how to do the job, and in this day and age, a lot of it has to do with electronic. And in this day and age, a lot of it has to do with, uh, electronic, uh, computers and all that, uh, so we have to be able to give them the right tools, teach them how to use the tools. Develop leaders, future leaders in our organization. Uh, we have, we do a pretty good job, but we can do better. And by doing that, we, we look to other agencies, people, and outside of policing, to develop our future leaders. So, again, this is for us to develop ourselves internally, so that the product that we provide, the members that are there are providing the best service possible to the community. Because they have achieved, or they've been provided with the tools and the training that's necessary to be able to go out there and do that. Excuse me. Mental health, that is a big issue for us, it continues to be. PTSD is, I'm sure everybody knows the acronym, and you've heard it before. It is, never was talked about when I first started, twenty-eight years ago, and I dare say, Superintendent Masu, come from some, the same era, probably can reiterate that that wasn't, uh, it was put up, put up and shut up, or, you know, uh, stop being a princess, get back to work. And I don't want to offend princesses, but that's, that's kind of the language that we were using back in the day. And we, you know, it's like, your boss would say, hey, go to the bar, have a couple of drinks, go home. We'll see you at work tomorrow. No matter, you know, you, you've just seen the worst of the worst, and that, that was kind of the response. So we, we obviously have to do better, because we pay in, we pay a price for not taking care of our people. These are the people that are unable to show up for work. And that, obviously, is with any industry, with us, obviously, it becomes, uh, far more of an issue. So, we have to take care of ourselves, so that's why this one's in there. But the trickle-down effect, of course, is when we're taking care of ourselves, that means the people are now going to be engaged in showing up for work and taking care of their communities. This is where this one is very important for us. So, that's our strategic plan. Months and months in the works. We boiled it down to, oh, ten slides. Nine if you excluded the front one about the RCP press, uh, so. There is obviously a far more in-depth report on this, but I, for those that are going to never want to read it, uh, and we've put a lot of time and effort in this, and it's important, because it is... So Robert Field from many, many a century ago is the one that came up with, uh, the Treatise on Policing. And first and foremost was, we work with the community, we're part of the community, we work for the community. So, it's a very simplified way, he's far better in English than I am, but that's the reason for the strategic plan. So that we reach out to the community, the community is to get engaged. We want it, we solicit their engagement, the good, the bad. We, you know, we know that there's things that we do well, but we know that there's things we can improve on. We need to hear that from the community. The community has to have that ability to utilize their voice to tell us, hey, this is where we can do better. Visibility, accessibility, obviously, was a, a huge touchstone. On top of, obviously, dealing with the, the crime, the actual criminal aspects that are going on within the community, but it was, hey, we want you to be more involved in the community. We want to see that you're out there with us. And so we, we listen. If we don't listen, then there's no sense in doing this exercise. It just becomes, uh, a paper exercise, and some, somebody gets a, spends a lot of time doing a lot of work that has no end. So, uh, this is what it is that we've developed. Again, it does have a touchstone to Hope. I know that it is U F D R D as a whole, uh, but don't get lost in the fact that these topics were across the board in every community. So it's not changing from Hope, you saw the hot of the slide specific to Hope. And, uh, that is what I'm responsible for, and I'm responsible to Superintendent Masie to say that this is what we're doing within Hope, that meets the needs and the requests of the community.
If there's any questions, let's find out. Thank you for your presentation, Staff Sergeant, uh, Council.
I am, uh...
How far is it?
Through you. Thank you for coming, we appreciate it. I just have a question that is probably ignorant one on my part. Does each police officer have a secretary receptionist at the office so they can, they, she can help them write up the reports? Or does the police officer have to write out his or her own reports? Or can he just dictate it, and she writes it up, and then he can be on the field more? I'm just asking.
No, thank you for that, and I love your utopian vision. But we do have, not for each individual officer, uh, we do have administrative assistants in the office that do a large, uh, portion of our administrative work. Any statement that is taken, they transcribe, uh, but there is a verification process where the officer has to be involved. And the officer, because it's a firsthand report, ends up doing a lot of the, uh, the reporting themselves. Because there is a requirement within the court process that they're providing a first-person account of what's happened. So anytime you start filtering it, then it becomes a question as to what would happen in, uh, to answer the question more succinctly, is if I give a person to type up the report, I now have to review, review the report for accuracy. So, whether that would be a labor saving or time saving, I'm not sure. Uh, but because of the necessities within the courts and first-person accounts that we have to provide, um, it, it kind of negates the fact that we're able to utilize something along those lines. But we do utilize, in circumstances like statements where they are very lengthy, uh, in some cases ours, where somebody else is doing the transcription. However, part of the verification process now is the person that took the statement is now have to review all the work and ensure that every i's out and t's crossed. So, it is a very, uh, time, time process, time-involved process that cannot be escaped. And that's primarily to do with the court system.
What a good question, right? I wish, I truly wish.
Carl, have the DMS, Digital Evidence Management System?
Yes.
Um, if, if, the worship, uh, is, the, the question kind of segues into a project that, that the Upper Prairie Valley Regional Detachment is going to, you have a pilot project on, which essentially what that means is that we're going to be given a, uh, some software and the ability to try something new and exciting, and it's not going to cost us anything. So it's called Digital Evidence Management System. And essentially what it is, is every officer will be given a smartphone, and it'll have an app on that smartphone, and when they get to a scene, and if you were a victim, we would take a statement from you, you would dictate your statement, I would ask you questions, and then we would get that, and we're still out in the field, we would download that statement to a electronic transcription, and where it would transcribe it, and it would send it back to the, uh, the police office. So when Carl or one of his team get there, then they would just have to prove that, and put it on the file. And the same thing would be for pictures, photographs, for, for different crime scenes and that sort of thing. And, uh, again, it's, Atlas Refluence Department's been using it for the last eight months. And, uh, on, on again, for the municipal end of things, there is a pilot project, and, uh, so they came out to do an assessment, they decided, we don't want to talk to you guys because we know you're going to take this away from us. So we're not going to tell you, because it's working well for them. And so, again, uh, through the, to the province, we get to be the RCP Guinea pig for it, and push it out. So we'll be, come this, this late summer, this fall, we're hoping that, uh, it'll all be in place, and then we'll, we'll start using it. And we'll see just as to, exactly what you're referencing, just as to, you know, it does kind of give you that, that person Friday there, that, hey, it's transcribing, that sort of thing. So, like, who has an Apple Watch in the room here? And if you have an Apple Watch and it's hooked up to your text messaging or whatever, you can just hit it, and it just bothers my mind just as to how accurate it picks up the transcription. And it, it's vastly improved over the, over the years, so, and the technology is supposed to be the same.
Thanks, sir.
Counselor Smith.
So, for interacting with the town here because of our chainsaw cartons, uh, this year, we're putting a chainsaw carton at the RCMP station, it was asked for many years, and then...
Cardinal?
That's not going to be me. And so, uh, it'll interact with everything else we have in town, because, uh, in Leavenworth, Washington, that's what they've done down there, and people come back, so they'll love us kind of even. Include the, the local police department in that way, this, ours would be involved with us through the fact of the same arc that we're going, that will be in front of there. And part of our upshow will be, the RCMP station will have something there, so.
Good.
We're probably, Council will be doing that this year. Thank you.
I'll be out in Red Search again this year. For those that got used to me last year, or got tired of me last year, um, I'll give you, just as a, and it's a, not really an in-house thing, uh, so last summer, I, I didn't get out as much as I wanted to, but even in the limited time that I was out there, uh, I met people from, because I asked where they're from. So just so you're aware, and I don't know if anybody else tracks this, so this is just my little system that I do, my little idea system I come up with by asking. People from thirty-one countries were in Hope. I don't think I caught everybody, because I'm not sure everybody understood the question that I asked, but there were thirty people from thirty-one countries coming, that came to your Hope last summer. That, I thought that was a, a rather large substantial number when you think of Hope. So, you know, that's, uh, that speaks well, and hopefully, we're able to put, again, hope unattended, we put a positive spin on the community, so people would come back here. It's just something as simple as me asking a question and being out in the, in a Red Search to be, I saw it on a postcard now. My family had a great big laugh at that. That to be said, I, I thought that, again, was the, uh, speaks well to Hope, in my mind, that that many people, because it's not me as the drawing card, it's Hope, is, uh, what kind of through this community.
I get the last word, as usual. Thank you again, Staff Sergeant Ryder. I, I, first of all, I appreciate your involvement in the community. We're on several committees together, and we're all there for the same reason, to help make our community a better place to live and work. And I, I appreciate the extra time you put in on all those committees. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Mayor.
One of the things that I have a concern about is, um, there seems to be a lack of, um, the initiative to build cases, um, and I've seen it from some of your members. And I don't know whether it's a director from up above, but, um, when you go out to a scene and, uh, they don't want to take fingerprints, and they don't want to, uh, take on information that could help them in the future, and also, how much communication do you have with other detachments in the area to see whether the same scenario is going on in their community?
Thank you. Uh, one, it speaks to supervision, part of it. Uh, every case is on its own basis, uh, and we should never say no to information. Whether the information is going to help us solve a crime, or it's going to be useful for that particular, uh, that crime that you're investigating, don't know. I always look at it as Legos, we always have, uh, we always build things with, like, we build a house by Lego, one block at a time. Uh, that's how we, I look at investigations. Anything forensic-wise, that's the officer at the time, is going to make that determination based on their knowledge and their skills and abilities as to whether or not it's going to be successful to have somebody come take prints, based on a variety of issues, a variety of factors. Do we look at other, or talk to other police agencies? All the time. That, that is a constant that goes on. We're ingrained with a number of different, uh, committees, groups within the lower mainland that include our municipal partners, the other detachment, uh, RCMP detachments, uh, that, uh, share information on criminality, so that we can determine, okay, what are the trends? What's moving through here, what's not moving through here? Is it going to affect this, does it not affect this, a number, obviously, a number of issues. We do look on a provincial level as well. We have our Arctic program that, uh, provides information from across the divisions to say, okay, if there's an issue that's happening in Campbell's, what could it have a translation, or can it happen here? So, we are filled with information, or provided with information from a number of different, not only, uh, police agencies, but external agencies as well. So it, it all goes into that, into that bank that we can draw from, that's going to help us, uh, do our job better.
Thank you for your response, but we're going to continue on.
Okay.
If you have any, if you have any more questions, we can help you, maybe the intermediate or the faculty, uh, thank you. Into staff reports next, please, Chairman Mr. Portolowski.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. Uh, this is another, uh, report that ideally will be annual, and addresses, uh, the county's goal to optimize asset management, and address the infrastructure deficit this community, like many other communities has. So, uh, I'll pass over to my colleague, Mr. Maitre.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council. So the purpose of my report tonight is to seek Council's support for application to the upcoming intake of the Asset Management Planning Program, that was a fifty-fifty matching grant, uh, provided by the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and it's administered by U B C M. So the district has had, uh, recent success with this, uh, grant program, uh, in 2015 to create our asset management plan, in 2017 to do a risk and criticality analysis of our utilities, and in 2018, uh, towards the water master plan. So, um, as Mr. Portolowski alluded to, the rationale for, for applying for this grant is to improve upon our existing, uh, asset management plan, which was finalized in 2016. And we, uh, intend to do this through the creation of a sewer master plan. So, within the report, there is a recommendation for your consideration. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Counselor, ask.
Sorry, I...
You go ahead.
Okay, uh, through you, uh, when I was reading through this, it said you're going to use TRU consulting, I guess?
To do this, uh, to create the sewer master plan, yes.
Uh, so should we not do an R and P, or, or do we know they're going to treat us accurately with funding and costs and all that, if we, or are we given to them?
So back in, uh, 2017, in the spring of 2017, uh, staff sought to establish a relationship with an engineering firm that would be ongoing on an as-and-when basis. Uh, the reason being is that when you continually shift from one firm to another, they never really get a good handle on the infrastructure within Hope, and, and they're not as well-positioned to provide you with sound advice because of that lack of understanding. So previous to bringing TRU on as our contract engineer, uh, the district was, uh, going R and P for every project. And, uh, from my experience, uh, in local government, uh, you're far better off to have, uh, a contract engineer that you can use repeatedly, that does gain that understanding of the community and can provide you with better advice.
I like that idea of having one engineering company. Uh, but I'm just wondering, what are the costs? Are they billing us by the hour, or are they billing us on a contract basis? Or how are they billing, and how do we know that's fair?
So for general engineering, so what we did in 2017 is we put out an expression of interest, and we had a number of firms respond, I, I believe it was somewhere in the neighborhood of half a dozen. Uh, and they provided us their rates, and TRU's rates were competitive with all the other, uh, firms that, that put forward a proposal. Uh, we, uh, selected TRU based on, uh... Basically, their presentation to us, and our interview with them, and a number of firms. And we felt that TRU was the best fit for this community. Uh, I had a previous experience with them, and I was quite happy with them, so. We did do, uh, a verification on their rates at that time, and I feel that their rates continue to be competitive with other firms in the industry.
Thank you. Counselor, my question is just, does the, does the sewer or master plan also do stormwater?
The intent is to do a stormwater master plan in 2020, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickin. So, Council supports the District of Hope application to the 2019 U B C M Asset Management Planning Program for a grant funding in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars to advance the district's asset management planning through the creation of a sewer master plan, and the Council committed, the district proposed to provide overall grant management.
Second, what's it, opposed, carried. Your second report, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is largely administrative matter regarding a provincial right-of-way, which most people won't realize is under Cockawee Lake. So we'll pass them by colleagues here, who are just going to explain that.
Mr. Mayor, through you. Uh, so the purpose of this report is to applaud the provincial government for replacement tenure for an existing right-of-way which expires on September twenty-seventh, 2019. And the right-of-way, uh, is over a portion of the bed of Cockawee Lake. So essentially, the, it's a pipe that goes between East Cockawee Lake and Main Beach Boat Launch, between sewer lift stations, and it conveys all the sewage from East Cockawee Lake, uh, to the west side, and then eventually occurring a series of pumping and gravity, uh, systems to the, uh, treatment center. So this is, uh, as Mr. Portolowski alluded to, as, if Council will recall, last year we had another, uh, right-of-way renewal up in Cockawee Lake. Uh, it seems like most of the right-of-ways out there were established, uh, at, at the same time. And, uh, this is a simple renewal of, of a right-of-way that is in place and that is set to expire. And this is a simple renewal of a right-of-way that is in place and that is set to expire.
Thank you. Any questions, Council? Okay, thank you. The council, District of Hope endorsed the application to the provincial government for replacement tenure of right-of-way, number 237194, over the bed of Cockaway. Yale District, of the Yale, of the Yale Division of the Yale District, shown outline on Plan C13757 for the purposely sanitary sewer line, and further that council supported term for more than 30 years. Move, second, all's in favor. Oppose, Carrie. Thank you. There's no committee reports tonight. Mayor and Council report, I have a brief report. Move on to Counselor Smith at the end when I'm done. Attended the BC Transit public consultation recently. Same theme came up, there's a need for a midday route. You can get there in the morning, get there in the afternoon. Seniors are having trouble with midday medical appointments. And they seemed concerned about this. And BC Transit was listening, it seemed to be the number one item. The ridership is up approximately 100 per month. The average is 700, they've gone up to about 800 space over the year, which is good news. And it was approximately at that time, 200 online surveys have been completed. So public's responding. And the most is positive about the service. And I'm sure we will get that midday route there. We've completed round three of the budget meetings. I think we're moving forward with a good plan, we'll see Thursday. I met with the University of Fraser Valley President, Dr. Joanne McClain. Talked about a wide range of topics, including increasing community engagement and broadening the local course selections. She's been doing her job, she came on board May 2018. So she's looking forward to working with our community and seeing what we can do together. On the fun side of our job, the grade five class was here for a Q and A in the council chambers. Interesting questions, a broad range of questions. Some I think may be prompted by family members, but everything from how much do you make, to what do I want to do when I retire for being the mayor? So it was very enjoyable. The women's hockey tournament, I saw two games there, including the first game and the final game. It's too bad the weather was so good. They were hoping for a bit of rain to bring more people inside, but it was still well attended, and they plan to come back next year already. The organizer talked to me after the game, and he said, it retreated extremely well at all levels, and the community and the facility was great. And they had lots of comments about the good ice. And I hear that from you as well.
Keep me out.
That keeps you out. And the last item is, it's Volunteer Week. So I'd like to take a moment to thank all our community volunteers for their generous hours of volunteering. It's what makes our community the great place to live, work, and play. And there's a volunteer creation event tomorrow from 1:00 to 4:00 at Reed Wright, at the Free Writing Building. There's an appreciation, and coffee, and cake. And thank you for any volunteers that want to come down. Those that do volunteer in our community, you are well appreciated. Counselor Smith.
Okay, good, mine's simple. Yeah, thanking staff for the budget meeting. I'm pretty, I don't know, asleep, but it's done very well, so. Another, I had one of my colleagues that I work with call Public Works, call Front Office, call Public Works, and had some trees dealt with on the street with a ridiculously timely manner. So he wants to say thank you very much. John took care of it very well, and was done with it hours. So he was very happy to do that, so. Other than that, I have my last report.
Thank you. Counselor Tron, please.
Yeah, just actually, I thought what both of you kind of said, they sounded pretty happy with the budget because it's going as well. And like Peter, I attended, I'm sure it was the final of the Celtics with the hockey league. And I was talking with one of the, he was one of the members of the two teams that was playing in the finals. And he just echoed, yeah, like, ice was great, great location for all the teams. In fact, his team that actually won didn't let it go on all weekend, so I guess he was doing his job. And that will be extended again next year. Yeah, old Barney's for a great husband.
Counselor Stewart.
Okay, thank you. Purple Lights Committee has started up. For anyone who doesn't know what Purple Lights is, it's a committee that brings awareness to domestic violence. And it's around the month of October. And their goal is to get the message out that you don't have to suffer on silence. So they've chosen their theme for this year, and the theme is "I Have a Voice." And in the past, they've chosen things like love and respect. And they've done coloring pages around those topics, and getting the kids involved, getting organizations involved. So this year, it'll again be on October the 1st. This committee meeting that we went to, we reviewed last year and the events that took place. We did a hot dog fundraiser at Vital Foods and Simon Foods, as well as the Maple Battalion story was told in our schools. Now, anyone who doesn't know the story, it's about a relationship where violence took place, and unfortunately, someone's life was lost. But the message needs to get out to our youth and people who are just starting out in relationships. What is a healthy relationship? And how do I know if it's healthy? And if I'm a friend of someone who's in an unhealthy relationship, how do I, how do I address that? How do I bring that up in a conversation with them? So this year again, the focus will be on giving people their voice and letting them know that they speak up, just as we heard with the RCMP earlier, increase the number of people who report. So I'll keep you posted as to how that's progressing. Also attended budget meetings and the transit consultation at the Red Center. And I attended another community action committee, where we had the regional director show up. This is at the mental health, regarding mental health in our community. And the attendees at the meeting are basically people who have lived experience. So they're talking about what are some of the challenges they face in access and care in our community. So one of the things they pointed out is that in Chilliwack, the former mayor was really, really instrumental in helping them chime on about how they needed certain services. And because of her relentlessness, they were able to get services. So if you guys want to chime in, one of the services we need in Hope is an outreach worker. So if you have the ear of someone who can make that happen, just outreach worker in Hope Mental Health. And just keep going until we get what we need in this community. There are over 200 people serviced in our mental health facility in Hope, three nurses, and one support worker. It is not an hour. And we need to chime in and make sure that Hope gets the services it needs. They say that, the lady reported out, that in the Fraser Health system, it seems that the money trickles down, trickles down, trickles down, until it gets to Hope, and then we get less life. So we need to be a strong voice and ensure that the people of this community get the services that they require. And I said I'd do that, so hopefully you heard me. All right, got that one? Okay, so, oh, I also attended the Fraser Health Hospital Foundation's presentation on wills of states and gift planning after death. And that was enlightening. So I have a huge package. If anyone is planning in those directions, please, are you planning? You gotta plan, because here's the thing, here's the thing. When you plan, you can actually create an estate where less tax needs to get paid if you do it methodically. And did you know that if you give a gift of stock or an investment to a charity, that actually becomes a tax deduction to your estate? But if you take the estate and then write a check to that charity afterwards, now it becomes part of your capital gain. So you want to make sure that if you plan to be charitable in your death, that you do it beforehand and get the deduction. It is very hard to...
It sounds like it.
And that would be everything I have to report. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Stewart. We've been told.
Yes, you are, outreach worker.
Okay, thank you. I attended the Hope Great Bears. And it was really interesting that Lego, made that they had a couple of weeks ago, brought in, they were able to donate about $3,000 to community, back to the communities. I think what was it, the senior?
Park Street?
Park Street, yeah, $2,000 to Park Street.
Yeah, and $700 to the Silver Creek Library and Band Program.
So that meant it's wonderful. And it also meant through the Chamber of Commerce. And we're still working on getting that highway site redone. It's a slow process, but we're going to try and get it done. That's all I have.
Thank you for your report, Counselor.
Yes, from my report, I've got, the eventual, another board meeting coming up on the 15th. It's sort of a normal scheduled board meeting, it's only the fourth Tuesday of the month. They wanted to have one more in there to finalize things before the AGM, which is on the 26th, at the Conference Center. And one topic that came up at the last eventual meeting was, council liaisons are currently non-voting members, I guess you could say they're either liaisons. But our last council strategic planning session, we had our solicitor here, they mentioned that the vote kind of changed again. And is it worth looking into to see if Counselor Smith or myself, or whoever the appointed liaison could be voting members again? Just a topic for conversation to see if it's possible. Somebody looking to take, or if it's possible.
Counselor Portolowski.
Take some notes.
That's all I have for board meetings. All right, Counselor Smith.
Also, I attended the BC Transit. One of the things they are looking for is to have the buses connect with SkyTrain. So that is on the drawing boards and that, which would be a great thing. And it's very affordable for people traveling. They also stop at Chihuahua, and it's Seabird on the way down, too. So they've added that to its shelves. Also, the budget meeting round three, women's hockey championship game, I went to that. Very entertaining. Mr. Portolowski, appreciate that. I think I'll go to score on you on the whole tournament, if it feels good for you.
Anything for charity.
I attended the Chilliwack Plowing Match. I drove a farm tractor when I was a Brit, when I was just a kid. So it's a 1972 John Deere, which was a new tractor for me. But it was very interesting and a lot of fun. It was very muddy, the boots were about three times the size of it, and it was in the mud. Not very happening, the team at the library is working on it, we're still trying. By the end of August, we're hoping to have 4,000 people signed up in Hope here with library cards, which is an excellent ratio. Also, attended the, made a community group meeting, actually about the medical service and health of the local, well, living, healthy living in Hope area, with Jordan Christmas, which is really a really name. Mr. Portolowski and I met with him, and they're talking about needs in the community and that. And after listening to him talk about other places, we're actually doing pretty good. We have a pretty good team in place, and Hope are working towards pretty positive things ahead, what some of the areas are looking at. We may as well, we're working on Sixth Avenue again tomorrow. We have excavators, fortunately, Mr. Dickens will lie with supplies and that, so we can be, you know, safe in the traffic and everything else in the area. And what else was it? Oh, also, you can notice Public Works, when they put down calcium on the road this year, they didn't use as much sand. How clean the streets have come this year, which actually saved us a lot of money and cleaned up over previous years, which also doesn't go down the drains or anything. So just, it heads up to people that, you know, that's what's the idea, to try and save us money again, so. And that's it.
All right, thank you for your reports, Counsel. We're moving into permits and bylaws. Ms. Valentine, do you want to speak to each one individually, or just go through these? These are pretty straightforward.
They're pretty straightforward. They're not too tough.
All right, thank you. So first one is that District of Hope Council Procedure Bylaw Number 1447, 2019, be adopted this eighth day of April, 2019. Move, second, all's in favor. Oppose, Carrie. B, that the District of Hope Official Committee Plan Amendment Bylaw Number 1451, 2019, to redesignate the property at 598 9500 feet, road from limited use to country residential, be adopted this eighth day of April, 2019. Move, second, all's in favor. Oppose, Carrie. The District of Hope Zoning Amendment Bylaw Number 1452, 2019, to rezone the property at 598 9500 Creek, from a limited use L1 to country residential CR1, be adopted this eighth day of April, 2019. Move, second, all's in favor. Carrie, thank you. The Municipal Ticket Information Bylaw Number 1453, 2019, be adopted this eighth day of April, 2019. Move, second, thank you, all's in favor. Oppose, Carrie. The Bylaw No. enforcement Bylaw Number 1454, 2019, be adopted this eighth day of April, 2019. Move, second, all's in favor. Oppose, Carrie, thank you. Mr. Portolowski, over to you, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counsel. The report that Mr. Gill is going to talk about, quite frankly, is a result of a lot of great staff work, relationship building, and initiative on behalf of the community to service a need. And that need is multifamily housing that's affordable. This is one of the initiatives that's basically in the hopper now. We have a couple more, but this is now, with this concrete step regarding a development permit, is really going to become in view as far as the public is concerned. So I'd like to pass it on to my colleague, Mr. Gill.
Your worship through you. The proposal initially came to council back in September of 2018. The applicant successfully re-zoned the property from Highway Commercial to RM1 multifamily. The applicant intends to erect a 46-unit multifamily affordable housing complex consisting of a 38 apartment units and eight townhouse units in the form of two four-plexes. The, anytime someone proposes more than 10 dwelling units, it needs to be a development permit. In this case, the development permit that's come for you is the Hope Intensive Residential Development Permit. And basically, it outlines the sort of, the master plan for the site and how it's going to interconnect or synchronize within the community and the existing sort of location. And then also to follow up is the variance permits. The variances are for, two are for height in regards to the building height. One is just more of a technical concern in the sense that the highest pitch, according to the definition of building height, the average height is usually determined by the highest pitch and the highest eave. In the case of the apartment complex, the eaves are high, so it almost comes off as a flat roof. And therefore, you require a variance to sort of fix that up. The other end is the townhomes, which have sort of come over on height. And of course, with even their plans that they have submitted in, they're not taken from the actual ground, they're sort of a bit higher up. And so we're compensating for that. And just in case there's any sort of changes or design changes in stream, that's why we're sort of asking for a little bit more in the height envelope side of things. The site also has a variance for parking. The number of parking stalls, there are 70 stalls. However, the stalls that are within the townhomes are not going to be, they're only going to be exclusive for those tenants within those townhomes. They're not going to be open for everybody within that complex itself. And therefore, the variances for the number of parking stalls for the apartment complex, which come out to be about 45 stalls is what they're asking for. They typically would be required 49 stalls. And then, the other parking variance permit is in regards to the number of small parking stalls. Typically, you're allowed 15% in regards to the zoning bylaw. However, they're requesting it to be up to the 20.5% small parking stalls. There's no actual real concern when it comes down to affordable housing complexes. Typically, the ratio that most misthows use is a one-to-one ratio for unit to parking stall. In this case, the site's sufficient enough that it's going to be provided maybe more than the parking that's required for the tents within the complex itself. And then finally, it's the amenity area site requirement from the RM1 zone. It's typically required 100 meters for an amenity area, 100 square meters. And in this case, the... And in this case, the applicant would like to vary that to seventy-nine point five square meters. There is going to be an outdoor amenity area that would sort of compensate this. However, because it's more for housing people and more buildings are basically looking to create more units, this is why that variance is nice.
Thank you for your report. Before I move forward, any questions of staff, Councilor S.
So, thank you through you. I just have a couple of questions just to straighten my thinking up. Is the apartments going to be for rent or are they going to be strata?
Your worship through you, the intention when the re-zoning application came before us, it was for rental purposes?
Only rental, no sales.
Your worship through you, I cannot answer that question, I'm basically facilitating the application for the applicant. That would be a question for them to answer.
Okay, and what about for the multifamily, is that strata or is that strata for sale or just rental?
Your worship through you, once again, this is program housing, it was intended, purpose was for rental. However, it'd be a question for the applicant to sort of find out if in the future, if they're going to be considering strata or stratifying it for individual entitlement.
So don't they do the strata as they're doing development permit or do they put that in the development for strata?
Your worship through you, it would be a strata plan, however, there's no strata plan that's been submitted to the municipality at this point in time. I don't believe it's going to be a strata because of that. After the fact, it's a very difficult process to do to bring into a strata title. Strata conversions usually require coming back to council.
Well, that's why I was wondering if they're applying as a strata or if they're just applying as a rental unit, so it's not a strata.
Your worship, do you know it's not a strata, that's the best I know.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Smith. Is there visitor parking allowed here or no?
Your worship through you, yes, the plan does have visitor parking, but it does not require any sort of variances. And that's why it was sort of left out.
Oh, okay. Okay, and questions before I read these recommendations? That a Hope intensive residential form and character development permit be approved for multifamily affordable housing complex on the property seven five five Old Hope Princeton Way. And further that the Director of Community Development be authorized to approve minor changes to the Hope intensive residential form and character development permit. And further that for purposes of the development permit validity period, the conditions of the development permit shall expire on April eighth, twenty twenty-one. And further that for purposes of any associated building permit, that the substantiality start of any construction shall mean the completion of an approved foundation for any of the proposed structures as certified safe by qualified professional. Would that recommendation move? Second, all is in favor, opposed, carry. Recommendation number two, that in accordance with the District of Hope Application Procedures and Public Hearings Information Bylaw, the Local Government Act and the Community Charter authorize staff to notify area residents informing them that council will be considering the issuance of a development variance permit to vary the multiple family residential RM one maximum building height provision for townhouses from ten meters to eleven meters. Vary the multiple family residential RM one maximum building height provision for apartments from twelve meters to fifteen meters. Relax the minimum number of off-street parking spaces for apartments from one point three per dwelling to one point two per dwelling. Vary the small car parking provision from a maximum fifteen percent of the number of required off-street parking spaces to twenty point five percent. And vary the multiple family residential RM one condition of use for common amenity area from one hundred square meters to seven point, to seventy-nine point five square meters in order to construct a multifamily affordable housing complex on the property seven five five Old Hope Princeton Way. Moved. Second, all is in favor, opposed, carry. Back to you, Mr. Gill.
Your worship through you, six six four three six Cockle Lake Road currently went through a demolition permit for above the foundation portion. However, the property owner would like to maintain that foundation for sort of a rebuild or a change in the structure's design. And therefore, because it's located in East Cockle Lake, it's affected by two development permits related to hazards, one being a flood erosion hazard, the second being a geotechnical hazard.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Council, any questions of staff before I move on? Thank you. That a flood and erosion and geotechnical hazard development permit be approved for the property legally described at six six four three six Cockle Lake Road for the construction of a single family dwelling on the existing footprint of the original residence and approved accessory structures subject to District of Hope receiving a satisfactory certified report from a qualified professional confirming site-specific safe building envelopes. And further that the Director of Community Development be authorized to endorse the flood and erosion and geotechnical hazard development permit and required covenant document. And further that for purposes of the development permit validity period, the conditions of the development permit shall expire on April the eighth, twenty twenty-one. And further that for the purposes of section five zero four of the Local Government Act, substantially start any construction shall mean the placement of the required geotechnical engineer-designed scour protection position along the existing foundation. Moved second, all is in favor, opposed, carry. Mr. Gill, again, please.
Your worship through you, once again, this is another property in the East Cockle Lake area affected by the two hazards, the flood erosion and the geotechnical hazard. In this case, the proposal that's come before you is in regards to in addition to an existing building, approximately nine hundred fifty square feet is how much they want to sort of expand it by. And then also to build a detached garage of about nine hundred square feet.
Questions, Councilor? Okay. Excuse me, that a flood and erosion and geotechnical hazard development permit be approved for the property six six five nine six Cockle Lake Road for in addition to the existing dwelling and the construction of a new detached garage subject to the District of Hope receiving a satisfactory certified report from a qualified professional confirming a site-specific safe building envelope. And further that the Director of Community Development be authorized to endorse the flood and erosion and geotechnical hazard development permit and required covenant document. And further that for purposes of the development permit validity period, the conditions of the development permit shall expire on April the eighth, twenty twenty-one. And further that for the purposes of section five zero four of the Local Government Act, substantially start any construction shall mean the placement of scour protection along the foundation of the existing house and proposed addition. Moved second, all is in favor, opposed, carry. Thank you, Mr. Gill. Moving on to the financial plan. If the District of Hope twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three Financial Plan Bylaw number fourteen fifty-five, twenty nineteen, you read a first, second, and third time this eighth day of April twenty nineteen. Moved second, question. Question. Councilor Smith.
Thank you through you, just one question on our page ninety-six. It's got a section for revitalization tax exemption. Saying that you tell the page that a tax exemption are outlined in the District of Hope Tax Exemption Bylaw, but since that's currently expired and we haven't brought it up, should we leave that in there or take it out for now? Or does it not affect anything?
I would suggest that we leave it in in case council, as far as their plan discussions are already bringing the revitalization initiative back to council. Ultimately, the tax exemption is only allowable if there's a bylaw in place. So this would be null and void if in fact council chose not to put back in place another revitalization tax incentive program.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor. You did, second, all is in favor, opposed, carry. District of Hope twenty nineteen Annual Tax Rate Bylaw number fourteen fifty-six, twenty nineteen, you read a first, second, and third time this eighth day of April twenty nineteen. Moved second, in discussion, all is in favor, opposed, carry. Correspondents, if the council payable checklist given for March twenty nineteen, we receive. Moved second, all is in favor, opposed, carry. If the information correspondence given, we believe, we receive. We receive, thank you, all is in favor, opposed, carry. This time we'll entertain any questions from the public regarding the agenda. Gill, stretch your questions answered, thank you. The next meeting is Tuesday, April the twenty-third, right here in the District of Hope Housing Chamber.
Mr. Mayor, it may be worth publicizing at this time again, the public consultation on the budget bylaws, which is happening this Thursday.
This Thursday at six thirty, thank you for the reminder. Motion to adjourn. Moved second, all is in favor, opposed, carry, everybody's paying attention, thank you.